Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out today. Welcome to the March 5th, 2020 Board Conference and Business Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Regal, could you call a row for us, please?
Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Mr. Fleischer? Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Minji?
Here.
Mr. Centon?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yep.
Ms. Snadgrass?
Here.
Ms. Swedeman?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here, thank you. No one has signed up in advance to speak in public session this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? I'll ask you to come to the podium, please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes, okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Helene Conroy Smith. My address is 32 East Westwood Park Drive, Haverford, PA. And so tonight, I'm talking on behalf of my experience here. I had sent a letter to the school district, and I'm unsatisfied with my response. On January 13th, Mark Obdacki, the Assistant Volunteer Strength Coach, stated the boys' football team owned the locker room. They made the move, he also stated that the boys may move the girls off the machines if the boys needed them because the girls are flakes. For two more weeks, Mr. Obdacki's misogynistic behavior continued as he moved the lighter weights, five and seven pound weights, to the hall. These are the same weights that the girls use. Then, coincidentally, the weight room was continued to be rearranged, setting up the feeling uncomfortableness for the girls as the boys were kind of right there as the girls came in. On January 24th, I sent an email to Mr. Dunagie to address the repeated microaggressions. I'm aware that some of the coaches were aware of this behavior and put back the weight room to its original setup. My husband and I could no longer allow for the kids to be observing this behavior and decided to send an email to Mr. Dunagie. My husband and I were saddened by the slow response from the district as we received the letter from Mr. Dunagie on February 20th, 2020. I am quoting part of this letter. "We initially received your complaint by email on January 24th with supplementation by email on January 27th. In addition to meeting with you and my child, along with the athletic director, Joanne Patterson, also interviewed Mr. Obdacki and multiple other witnesses regarding information set forth in this complaint. Based on our investigation of this matter, we have concluded that there was no violation of district policy or law. Although we did not find any violation in regard to the events raised in your complaint, we will be instituting internal changes regarding the procedures for use of the weight room to assure that all students were supervised and have equal access to the use of the weight room and the equipment and the workout. To address this, that says that no further similar issue or concerns have arisen since January 13th, we are contesting that this is untrue, that we are aware that the weights were moved out of the weight room and that the weight room had been changed. To address instituting internal changes regarding the procedure for the use of the weight room to assure that all students are supervised, we are aware as parents that at no time should children be in the weight room unsupervised. This is not a new procedure. There are signs in the weight room that states students are to be supervised. Each team was also assigned time for the weight room. This was ignored, we feel, and that the weight room for the girls was earlier than the football team, which was, I believe, a 4:30 start time. I'm looking for real change here in Haverford. Adherence to policies, policies that ensure all teams have access needed specifically during their specific season. So winter track, field hockey, and whatever sport, winter, in the winter, has that access first. The same goes for spring and fall. Also, I'm looking for coaches to have inclusive training that specifically teaches how to adopt an integrated, multidisciplinary approach to talent development and performance and enhancement, and also fairness among all sports teams. You have really saddened me by your response. Under Title IX, you do not provide the young ladies equal access and allow to volunteer to perpetuate inequality. I am considering filing a Title IX complaint on behalf of the girls' track team. We are looking for change. The Smith family household believes that children matter. We believe adults in power always should practice integrity, honesty, and fairness, and treat everyone with equality. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak this evening?
If we have commentary on the calendar, can we wait for that in the agenda or speak now?
Speak now.
Hi, my name is Lisa Linder. I live at 329 Robin Lane in Haverford, Pennsylvania, 19083. I have looked at the original proposed calendar and the revised proposed calendar. With all due respect to how hard it is to please everybody, and I do know how hard it is, to start school over a week earlier, remove a week of summer, to only gain two days on the end, and an extra day on an already week-long vacation, just doesn't seem worth it. It's cutting summers that are already very busy but yet very important to our kids and very important to our families shorter. And I understood this year, it's a one-time thing, you know, we have construction, we all have to sometimes do something, but to do it again and then take a five-day break when they will have to then restart school again because everybody's going to be all chaos, I just don't see winning anything with this calendar. And I respectfully ask you to either reconsider the original plan or find a third option that doesn't have three days of school, five-day break, and then start for real. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Okay, thank you very much. Next item is our student reports. This evening, we have Anya Everhart from the middle school and Erica Borby from the high school.
Thank you, Board, for allowing me to present to you. My name is Anya Everhart, and I am in eighth grade at Haverford Middle School. The spring sports season starts this week. Teams are holding trials throughout the week, and practices will begin next week. Coaches and athletes are looking forward to an exciting and competitive spring sports season. Student-led conferences are scheduled from March 11th, 12th, and 13th. School will be dismissed at 10:50 a.m. on conference days. Our PTL is sponsoring a food truck event on March 12th in the back parking lot of our school. The food trucks will be on-site from 11 o'clock a.m. to 2 o'clock p.m. Staff and students are invited to visit the food trucks after dismissal. The 41st Annual Evening of Jazz is scheduled for Friday, March 20th. The event will be held in the high school auditorium and begins at 6:30 p.m. Daylight Savings Time goes into effect early on Sunday morning on March 8th. Please remember to set your clock one hour forward. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to present to you.
Thank you.
Good evening, staff, students, community members of the Board. I am so glad to be reporting tonight. While the month just began, exciting things have been happening at Haverford High School. On Friday, February 28th, the high school band led the parade of champions throughout the high school. Some of the numerous achievers being celebrated that day were the high Q team, hockey team, basketball team, cheer team, track team, and wrestling team. On February 27th, after an exciting and unpredictable game, the Fords Ice Hockey Team unfortunately lost to Springfield with a score of three to two. The Ice Hockey Team will be facing Penridge High School in the Flyers Cup quarterfinal match tonight at the stadium. On a side note, a live update, as of 7 o'clock, the hockey team was winning their match five to one. Hopefully, that number has increased since then. On Tuesday, March 3rd, the high Q team had a strong finish to their season, coming third in their championship match against Garnet Valley and Radnor High School. On February 29th, the girls' 200 relay team, swim team, broke the school record in the 200 freestyle with a time of 1 minute 39 seconds. Furthermore, congratulations to wrestler Shane McAdams for coming in fifth place in his weight class in regionals and qualifying for states. The PMEA Regional Conference was held last weekend with our very own high school representative, Liz Jocelyn, placing second as an auto and advancing to states along with Jack O'Leary, who placed third as base one. The freshman sophomore dance was held on February 28th and was a huge success. The boys' track team had a phenomenal winter season, breaking records in the four-by-four-hundred and distance medley relay. Best Buddies celebrated Inclusion Day on Wednesday, March 4th. Students signed a banner and pledged to spread the word inclusion and involve everyone. Best Buddies is also hosting a four-v-four basketball tournament on Friday, March 13th. As you can see, the Fords are gearing up in full force for the spring season and hope to accomplish even more as the weeks go by.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Erica.
Next items on our agenda is recognition of our sports and track, well, track basketball and cheerleading teams, and it's great to have everybody in the room. I just want to mention that, given the current state of affairs in the world, we're not going to be shaking hands with anybody this evening, but it's in our hearts and minds.
Thank you, welcome. We have two great teams here tonight, basketball and cheerleading. Both teams have exceeded our expectations this year. Both teams before the season were predicted to be good, but we didn't realize how great they would be. So just to give you a little background, both teams have coaches that are Haverford Town residents or are Haverford graduates, both the head coaches and assistant coaches. Both teams have incredible senior leadership. Both teams have incredible spirit, and both teams faced adversity at some point during the season and have come out to be champions. So it's been, it's been an unbelievable year. So first up, we're going to do the toughest team mentally and physically in the school, and that is the girls' cheerleading. So if the cheerleaders could come on up. I just want to tell the Board and Dr. Roushi, I'm no longer going to be going to cheerleading practices because when you go to cheerleading practices, first of all, they yell a lot, and then they throw each other in the air. And when they throw each other in the air, most of the time, they catch each other, okay? Most of the time. Every now and then, they don't catch each other, and then that person just kind of hobbles off, and then I'm standing there, and then they just kind of hobble back in, and they do it all over again. So the only person who's nervous is me, and now that I'm getting older, my heart can't really take that. So it's just been a great season, and up here, we have Coach Kelly and Coach Safran to introduce the girls.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Maria, and this is Joanna. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. We can thank Principal Dunagie, Joanne Patterson, and you, the Board, for all your support. It is a very, you know, it can be a very long season, and it is amazing when we have the support from our administration. And we're so happy with the season that we had. I couldn't have said it better myself. It was definitely a season that exceeded expectations, and we're so, again, we can't say it enough how grateful we are for Principal Dunagie, Joanne Patterson, all the Haverford High School support. And, of course, why we're here tonight is our first district championship ever in Haverford history. The girls worked so hard this year, and it really paid off having a district championship under our belt. So first up, Tegan Jobbahn. Megan Gunn. Senior Megan Gunn. Senior Madison Hoover. Catherine Sky Newman. Sarah Sadie. Ava Steiglman. Elizabeth Libby Switzer. And Bryn Buco. Thank you again so much for recognizing us. We're honored to be here tonight.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Again, a team, their first Central League Championship since 1970, since 1970. So I was a young little boy back then in 1970. But also, one interesting fact of the boys' basketball team is eight out of 16 players, their parents work in the district. All right, so championship parents lead the championship players, okay? And Ms. Kim Allen Stuck, who was on the school board, her son's on the team too, a former school board member. So nine out of 16 have a direct link to the Haverford School District, which is pretty cool. The boys' basketball team also was Sun Valley Tournament Champions this year. And then they started the season in the Central League two and seven, two wins, seven losses. And then they won 10 games in a row, 10 games in a row. So two and seven, most people in the world would quit. And they won 10 in a row with the support of the school, the cheerleaders, a lot of people, coaches believed in them, the players believed in themselves, and they won the championship. So ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Coach Heinrichs.
I broke the rule, I shook hands, sorry. Thanks for having us here tonight. Like Mr. Dunagie said, the support throughout those 10 games, I thought I wouldn't do this, but it was just unbelievable, the crowds. I mean, I was, I was the coach of Ridley, and Mrs. Minji was in the stands, and they beat us both times, but there was no one in the stands to see it. You know, there was no one there to see how great a team that team was, that Jake was on, and for, to see what was going on with our sixth man, and them getting their friends there, and school board there, cheerleaders, parents, but more important, the community. It was awesome, awesome. And I think the biggest thing as a coach, teacher, I try and instill like a message at the beginning of the year. So mine was Henry V, Band of Brothers, and I don't even think they listened to it, you know? And the message was stick together, that, you know, one day, you'll stand tiptoe because you guys stuck together. I don't think they listened, but they got it. They got it on their own. They figured it out on their own, and they showed me a lot. I learned more from them than I taught them. So, thank you. Last thing, my coaches aren't here tonight. Without them, this couldn't happen either. They put so many hours, they listen to me complain. When they have a suggestion, I listen, sometimes I argue with them, and that's when we sit around for an hour and a half after a game, trying to figure out what we did wrong. And we, you know, we work really hard at it, and without them, we wouldn't be here today, and I wish they were here tonight to be honored as well, so. And I'll say one more thing about the season, because Coach, Mr. Dunagie brought it up about the two and seven, and the resilience that this group showed, the fight, the determination to not quit after three buzzer beater losses, then we had three buzzer beater wins, and to win three straight in the playoffs, you know? If at two and seven, you said I was going to be honored at the school board meeting, I thought it might be for something else. It wouldn't be for this. So it's pretty amazing, you know, to be sitting up here tonight and to be the first Central League Champion in 50 years, and I wasn't born yet, so it's pretty, pretty cool, pretty cool. So, again, thank you to the school board for all your support. The night we had, the Light It Up Green Night with the Linwood singing, it was just awesome. We raised over $2,000 for the three families in our, in our neighborhood, so it was really a special, a special day. So thank you for all your support. Thank you for having, making that night special as well, those who were there. I'm going to introduce the players now from the 2020 Central League Champs. Alex Googie Sideman. Kevin Gannon. Alan Tsak. Nick Houche could not be here. Tom Caruso. Colin Reynolds. Nick Trullo. Hunter Crozier. John Sideman. Will Hickson. And now these seniors, like Coach said, I mean, Pete said, that how much leadership they provided, and the reason, you know, we're standing here is because of the leadership they provided on a daily basis, the practice, and the way they conducted themselves on and off the floor, you know, they're great role models, great kids. I've known some of them since they were in third or fourth grade, coming down to Bailey Park with me and working in the summertime. So to see this, you know, transpire from nine years ago, when these guys were coming down with a ball, dribbling down to the courts three days a week in the morning, it's pretty, pretty special, so. Saleem Dwight. Adam Stuck. Connor Kaufman. John Shiverd and Tim Brown couldn't be here tonight. And last but not least, Sean Reynolds.
You have to bend down a little bit.
Just again, Board, thank you for taking the time out to honor. We'll be back in a couple weeks. We have a bunch of honorees from different sports and music and some STEM activities, so we'll be back in a couple weeks too. Thank you.
If you guys would like to hang around for another hour and listen to really exciting stuff, you're welcome to, but if you'd like to take this opportunity and sneak out, we'll understand.
Congratulations.
I'm going to ask the Board to give me a motion to approve the official minutes from the February 20th, 2020 Regular Public Board Meeting. Move. Second, any discussion?
Can I make one small change? It said Greater Valley YMCI, should be Greater Philadelphia YMCI. I don't know why I noticed that, but I did, so there you go. That was it, it was just, it was right in the, in the lease, it was just for some reason in the notes, it was not right.
Great. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is replacement of the high school track. Part of our capital plan, in addition to looking at the buildings, has been to also assess the condition of our track, and it's pretty old, so. We had our Liaison Committee for Facilities has spent some time listening to some proposals, and we're going to hear more detail this evening.
Good evening, thanks for having us. I have Bill Miller from, from Miller Flooring, who's going to go over the three options on the track. We have some samples, some comparisons to hand you out to look at, and I'll move it up to Bill.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Bill Miller.
Thanks for having me here tonight. I've been a, I'm a proud supplier installer for the Haverford School District for close to 30 years, and so we've worked on projects throughout the district renovations over the years, from the wood floors to wall pads, and tonight is the track. I'll do my best to talk about the comparisons and how each of them are built. We've proposed three different tracks, and all are of very good quality. Yes. So the first two tracks, and maybe we'll start with, yeah, let's go to the.
You can use the clucker.
Right here. So I brought this up here, I did a track comparison, and you'll see the, the first track is a Spur Tan BV. We've got a Wrecker Tan G13 and the Mondo Super X720. We've got great representations of each throughout the region, and JR's handing out the, that comparison. The first two tracks are polyurethane tracks. They're built a little bit differently. I want to show you a quick video of basically, and you can watch this as we talk about a So this is, this is, this is a build of the G13, which is at Franklin Field, University of Pennsylvania. Both of the tracks are built very similar. The, the main difference is the products that are put in the base layer. So that gentleman's standing on the base layer, and for the, the lower, the lower model, the BV, we basically paved that layer in place. And I'm going to pass the sample around.
What we're looking at, sorry, just to clarify, is the middle version, the sort of?
Yes, it is.
Option two.
Both, both represent, the difference between the two are the products and how they're assembled, but the, the top layer is built very much the same. The bottom layer is built differently in that the first layer, option number one, is paved in place. It's a black recycled rubber polyurethane with, that's held together with a binder. We paved that in place. This one here, the G13, the difference in the base here is that it is a polyurethane full pour, much like the top layer that's going down. And we put a, an SBR rubber, recycled rubber, in that base, and it provides elasticity. There's also a gel additive in that base that provides more force reduction. So the difference between the two is the second will perform better as far as force reduction. This application on the top is the same for both products in that we squeegee them in place with a notch trowel, and as it, we squeegee it across, it's about a five-millimeter thickness, and you'll see inside those wheelbarrows are the rubber. And that is an EPDM red rubber that is broadcast into the, the polyurethane. It's a method that's been used in different variations for close to 40 years, and you can see there that at the University of Pennsylvania, used a combination of blue and red. That adds cost to go with multiple colors, and that we have to stop and then reinstall, we can't do it all at one time. But yes, this- But, uh, yes, this, so this action that's taking place right now, the rubber is, uh, the term is broadcasted, basically thrown into that urethane and it sinks into the five millimeter. And if you, if you look at the top of the sample that was centered around, some of it is completely embedded inside the polyurethane and some of them stand, stand on the top. And once that process is done, we then recover, vacuum off anything that's loose. You'll, you'll find that and you'll see it on your track now, it is a polyurethane surface. That you'll have some of that rubber granule, uh, you know, in the drains on the side because it, some of it's just held on by a little bit and it takes about a year for most of that to, to wear off. So that's, that's a polyurethane application. Now I want to, I want to, I'm going to pass the second one around, which is the G13 and you can see the difference between those two. Second video doesn't look like it loaded. I'm sorry, the second video did not load in this. The next surface is, is Mondo Super X720. Seven, Mondo has been the, Mondo has been the Olympic surface since 1976. This is a variation of this. So you'll see this summer in the Tokyo Games, uh, you'll see a variation of this product that's specifically made for Olympic competition. The top is made very soft for very good traction and the bottom is made a little bit harder than the surface we proposed to install for you. The reason is the bigger the athlete, the less cushion you want for fast times in Olympic races. And, uh, so it's built differently and it's not a great training track. Uh, the track that we're proposing, Super X720, from Widener University to Upper Darby to Elizabeth Town College, there's a lot of, uh, nice installations. It's a pre-manufactured sheet good and every square inch is made exactly the same. So the advantages of the Mondo is, one is, is durability, uh, because in a track, a high school and college application where training and foot stability is very important, uh, that Super X720 is made very firm on the top so that it provides a very good durability. The bottom is then made with, uh, extra cushion to make it very soft for training. The advantage of having a Super X720 track is every step the athlete will take will be the same, uh, which in our, in our in situ or built in place polyurethanes, they're a little bit less consistent, but also still performing very well. The Mondo does cost more up, upfront and you can see in the, the comparison chart on the board up here is that the outlay upfront is, it does cost. It does cost more upfront to build the Mondo. However, uh, the Spur Tan BV, if you can't read that, is a 12 to 14 year total life of the track. After that 14 years approximately, you're looking at removing and replacing the track. The Record Jan, Record Tan G13, which is the one you saw at University of Pennsylvania, that can last up to 16 years and at the end of that cycle, you would have replacement. Mondo's going to be in place 20 to 22 years. And if you look at the, the original cost is in yellow, which shows that difference. At the first resurface, you're looking at the Spur Tan BV after eight years, you're going to spend in today's dollars, uh, about $250,000 to do a, an overpour of the surface. Uh, you're going to spend about the same for the G13, although that'll take place maybe two years after. Um, and with the Mondo, the first time you'll be doing any type of repairs, let alone any damage, would be at around that 10th year mark and which, with that price, it's a $50,000 cost. And that would be to do high stress areas, the pole vault area, the long jump area, all impact areas. You, you would then replace, uh, cleaning of the track and restriping. So that's what constitutes the $50,000. And if you see in green, it totals that up, but so by the eighth year, the Record Tan GT and the Mondo are about the same cost and Spur Tan BV is very close. Then we're looking at a second resurface that at 14 years, the Spur Tan BV, uh, that the track would need to be replaced at today's value at about $355,000. Uh, Record Tan, Record Tan G13 at 470 and the Mondo would be about 150,000 to replace. Usually at that time, we replaced lane one. The, the, the nice thing about Mondo is we can replace just one lane and not have to replace the entire track. And that's how we get to the 20 to 22 years. So if you look in blue, at that point, both, both of the urethane surfaces do cost more than the Mondo if you look at a long-term lifecycle study costs on the products. All are very good performance, uh, tracks. Spur Tan BV, you can see it, uh, at Lower Merion. You can also see it at, uh, Chestnut Hill Academy and then the Record Tan at University of Pennsylvania, Haverford College right around the corner. And then with the Mondo from Upper Darby to Widener to the United States Naval Academy to many of the division one schools as well. Another thing on Mondo is that, uh, about 30 years ago, New York City did, started to replace their tracks. They have 30 tracks and they started to replace them with Mondo. And, um, at that time, they installed about 10 tracks and then it was converted over to a urethane application. Uh, they did about 10 tracks and then they tried another product, uh, that was a, it was basically a copy of the Mondo product. Uh, what they found over that time is that many of the Mondo tracks were still in place when the others already had to be, um, removed, even though they were installed years later. Right now, we've installed, uh, five in the last two years and they basically have put out that throughout New York City parks and rec, that all their tracks would be Mondo tracks at this point. Uh, they know it's a, a higher cost out front, but long-term, they may not, what was explained to me is that we may not have the money eight years, 10 years down the line. So we would rather complete repairs and do it that way. So that's just a kind of a case study and I'd be happy to provide references for, for any of these. And, uh, any, any questions that anyone might have?
We have a lot of, um, school use, the track teams and other teams training on it, but, um, the track is also open to the community. Is there any concern among any of them or do any of them perform better just with, um, that kind of community access and?
Sure. Um, they're, they're all fine for community access. The more you use your track, the, the quicker it's going to wear. Um, you know, the one thing about, the one thing about putting a Mondo track is a lot of times it becomes a destination. People want to run in the track meets to qualify for districts and, uh, so for that reason, you may have a little bit more traffic. Just the community using it, it's a, it's a softer track and it feels very, very good. Uh, but Mondo is made of vulcanized rubber. So vulcanized rubber is the same material that's used in your car tires and it's the only material that's used in car tires. So whether it's cold or it's hot, uh, it's going to have very similar performance. You can park against a curb for, for a year and pull out and your tire's not lopsided. Uh, urethane doesn't necessarily have the same properties, although very, very, uh, very durable as well. Because the Mondo is pre-manufactured, you're probably a little bit safer with a lot of that type of traffic. Things that are done on many tracks is to alternate, uh, instead of using lanes one and two, maybe use lanes three and four or five and six and just switch that, uh, that traffic around if you're getting a lot of traffic. But it's, it's meant for multi-purpose, all these tracks are meant for multi-purpose and the more it's used, the quicker it can wear and that's why these are estimations. This chart is an estimation. And, um, yeah, so they, they all be fine for, um, for, uh, public use.
Two questions. Um, first, for people who might not know, can you just talk about the condition of the track as it stands right now and why we have to replace it and, you know, the safety concerns and, you know, environmental concerns? And then why is it important that we vote on this tonight for the ordering of the, if we decide to go with the option? Like what is the urgency of, of us taking this to a vote this evening?
Sure.
For that, for that process?
Yes. Uh, well, the condition of your existing track, uh, the asphalt from the beginning, the entire D-zone, that's the area where the shot put is and you do high jump in that area. It is all, has not had the proper pitch from day one and, um, it, uh, basically in the shot put circle, it basically had to cut grooves in that and also into the track just to get water to drain off of it into the side drain. The drains around the side, the covers probably should be replaced because they've taken on wear and tear and rusty and, um, they have been cleaned in a little bit. So, um, so as part of one of the options would be to replace that. Uh, the asphalt itself is fairly sturdy, although in its, in its present condition, we recommended to, to mill and pave that along with the, the D-zone. Uh, once that's done, uh, in our estimation and through several inspections, we don't, we don't feel that the entire base has to come up. So the good news is that we could just do a mill and pave and that's what's covered in that cost. Uh, once that's done, uh, it's going to be set up for the, the, any of, any of those three surfaces. So it's in, it's in poor condition right now and unsafe and it should be replaced. So if you do walk around the track, uh, you'll find many areas where it's starting to delaminate. So the surface itself and the type of track when it was put down, it could be, uh, it could be a combination of the tack coat that was put down before the urethane didn't hold properly. So, uh, even five, eight years ago, the, the track was clapping. If you walk around the track, you feel movement in the track and as it starts to open and you get water underneath, the water freezes in the winter time and it breaks more, has more separation. So at this point, the track is loose and. Yeah. And as JR just brought up is that, uh, a resurfacing was done on top of it. And anytime you do a resurface, just like painting your house, uh, it's only as good as that first coat is, that, that initial bond. And, um, so right now, even though resurfaced, um, it really should be taken off and addressed properly. The second question, the importance of, uh, ordering is that, uh, the first two, the first two options, uh, both the Spur Tan BV and the Record Tan G13, we can get those materials probably within about a month. If we choose to go with, if you choose to go with Mondo, um, it's a three-month lead time by the time it's manufactured and shipped to site. And, uh, so that's the, really why a decision would have to be made quickly if that, if that is a choice. Uh, the one, uh, thing that I can get to is I, included in the price is both one and two would be a one, would be a one light, one, one color application. And I can show you, you know, much, looks much like your track right now. That's not it. So that would be a one color application. It could be, it could be red, mostly, most of the time it is red and it just happens to be your color. With the Mondo, uh, included in the price for, for no additional money is a two-layer application, which makes the track look a little bit more interesting, doesn't cost more for us to do it, becomes in, it comes in a pre-manufactured roll and each lane is made to the width of, of each lane. And we basically wrap it around that turn. So it'll basically stretch around those turns. And you'll see at the top, there's two areas. That's the exchange zone, basically where you're handing off a baton. And that, that is, uh, track teams love it in that you can, running as fast as you can, entering that zone, you clearly can see, uh, the change in color and how long you have until you have to hand that baton off. So that is, that's very popular and, uh, that can be done also with the urethane, but you're, it's probably an add of about $35,000 add to go to a, an exchange zone type look. And, um, just because we have to stop and start like you saw in the pictures at Penn. So that, that hopefully addresses that. Um, yeah, any other questions?
I did want to ask, so this is a lot of money and it's a project that will have a big impact on the community for our student athletes and also for community use. Um, is there a reason why we're not going through a competitive bid? So we can make sure that we're getting the best value for our dollar?
This is, is a Co-Stars, uh, Co-Stars product.
State bid.
So it is a state bid.
It's on the state's point.
Okay.
So the, so we have, we have five different cooperative purchasing contracts. And basically they are bid competitively. And right now, the price of the, the price of the, say for just the Mondo itself, and I ran a calculation earlier, uh, there are union wages, but our prevailing wages are pretty high here, but in New York City, they paid for the same size track, $150,000 more. Right now, the prices have been locked in and there have been two price changes since they locked in the Co-Stars pricing. So you can competitively bid this, but the, the good part is that it's, the prices have been locked in place. So it, uh, the other advantages that, we've worked with you forever, we're here, uh, we're the only certified track builder in the state of Pennsylvania. Uh, we're located in Westchester, I grew up in Delaware County. I have four employees that are in the Haverford School District, including my son, live by Chatham Park across the street. So we have a vested interest, um, whatever we can do to help and make sure the quality is there from paving all the way through, um, I give you my word that I, I'll run your project and make sure it's the best it can be.
Thank you. It's, it's good to know too, that we are getting the best price possible for this kind of work.
Yeah. Just real quick, Bill's done our gyms. He's put the gym in at the middle school. He resurfaces the gym at the high school. He did our CrossFit room at the middle school. Um, we've done a lot of work with Bill. I've known Bill for.
Chatham Park Gym.
Chatham Park Gym. Came up here. Yes. Um, so I've known Bill now for like 15 years and Bill's done a lot of great work here and every time we need him, if we ever have a problem, we had a little issues at the high school with the pads, Bill sent his guys down and had them fixed. So we do have good service. Just wanted to throw that out.
Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
No problem. Other questions?
I have a couple of questions, Dave.
Sure.
So, um, my first question is that throughout the video, you had mentioned, um, recycled rubber for, and I think it was for those first two tracks. And so I guess I'm wondering if this also has recycled material in it and if there's any difference between environmental impacts between the three choices?
Yes, good questions. So the first two, yes, it's using recycled rubber tires, uh, as part of the build of the track and other is EPDM, which is, which is new. Mondo, they, they recycle, they, uh, it's antibacterial, it's antimicrobial. Uh, the product, once the Mondo is installed, there's never been asbestos, never been mercury, no heavy metals. So it's very good for the environment. Uh, at the end of the installation, for our Mondo track, uh, we can remove the track and have it reused in industry. So it can be fully recycled once it's done. Our urethane, we, we can right now have it recycled, but we're told that in years to come, we may not be able to. So your track, right now, we plan to have it not put in a landfill, but to put it back into industry.
Thank you. Um, and then I also had read that, um, there was a type of cleat that could not be used on the Mondo track. Um, if you could just go over why that is and if that's any sort of disadvantage to our athletes?
Sure. You can use any type of, you can use any type of cleat, but then there's recommendations. So Mondo, uh, it's a vulcanized rubber product like your car tires, so it has very good traction. So the reason that the track can last 20 to 22 years is we can use ceramic spikes, we can use pyramid spikes, that can be metal or ceramic, not to use a, a length longer than a quarter inch. That's what's recommended. So there's a, a page that's put out to say, these are all acceptable. And the reason that you may hear that there's a certain spike, you don't want anything over a quarter inch because frankly, it slows you down, uh, because the track has very good traction. The only reason you use a spike anywhere, uh, that's longer than a quarter inch and that's on the urethane or the Mondo is if the track is encapsulated, which is really not popular right now because it's a spray coating, which basically seals that rubber. I told you that, that rubber will wear off. If you seal coat it, it'll lock it in place. But when you do that, when it rains, it tends to be slippery. So you need a longer spike to actually get the traction to run your race. So, um, so hopefully that answers.
Yeah, I guess one concern that I had was that if there is any sort of, um, type of cleat or other shoe that couldn't be used on it and other folks from other schools are coming to, you know, to our track for a meet, they didn't know that, um, you know, if, if some, if something would happen that they would not be able that they would not be able to compete or something like that.
Yeah, most times in track meets, there are, everyone that's invited to your track meets is told ahead of time. Usually, teams will have backup, the teams usually have backup, you know, spikes. There's inspections sometimes. But if you use the longer spike, it's not going to ruin the track, but over time will prematurely wear. You won't get as much life as you could. But it is installed, you know, throughout high school, New York City. So you have people with all kinds of different spikes and cleats. And with everything being the same, it still would wear longer.
I think another challenge for us will be making sure, if we were to go with the Mondo track, that we communicate with the community. Because the track does get a lot of community use, like what is acceptable on the track? And how can we can all care for it?
Yeah, and it's similar. For all products, we basically have a sign that you can hang at all the entrances and it basically tells you the uses on the track. So that, along with alerting the community, I think the biggest thing is that when you're spending more money, you're just that much more careful with it. It won't wear any faster, but it's always good to protect any level of track. And I think that's definitely important.
Thank you.
I think there's one more point I'd like to, maybe you can speak to this in a bit more detail, but with regards to environmental impacts, with the first two tracks, because you're potentially spreading out rubber pellets over the polyurethane, over the first couple of years, those will eventually rub off, more or less, and then get into the waterways and go into the sewers and so forth. Whereas with the Mondo track, there's, I guess...
You don't have the, right, you don't have the same. And that's the reason that you'll resurface after eight or 10 years, is to rebuild that rubber back up. And that's why Mondo doesn't need to have the entire track done, we can just change the high-stress areas on it.
It's not just the first two years where rubber comes off, it'll be every reapplication of that. So eventually, it gets real.
Yeah, and it'll get down, it won't, so the biggest thing with any of these is to get on a program right away to do inspections at least twice a year. Just walk the track if any of the seams are opening. Preventative maintenance is going to make it last as long as it can and even longer. The United States Naval Academy, when we replaced it, they were very diligent on the repair work, that we got a call right away if there was anything that had to be done, being the military, so they had plenty of people to inspect it. But that track, when we removed it, it was 21 years old and it was still in really great shape. And the main reason they replaced it is during Hurricane Irene, it was under four feet of water, some of the asphalt heaved, so we had to do asphalt repairs. And for Division One program, that was the driving force for that.
By the way, how many YouTube's happened? One on traditional track versus Mondo track?
Well, if you look at, so the one thing is, we're installing, you know, building it for high schools because of the durability, longevity, safety for the athletes. But Mondo, if you want to talk on the high-end level, both of the urethane tracks put together have approximately, with Recor Tan, approximately 20 world records, where Mondo has 272 world records. So it's just a really fast track.
Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, right.
Do we, is there a warranty that comes attached with this that we will know about when we go out and...
Yes. And I have it on here. The warranty on both of the urethane surfaces is typically three-year warranty, although I've gotten our manufacturer to agree to a five-year. Where Mondo has a 10-year full warranty, where if it wears in 10 years, they'll fully replace the track if it wears. So yeah, it's double the warranty is.
Would that include like small maintenance things, like you're saying as well? Like if we have an inspector come out and they go around and look at it and there's a seam or something like that, would that warranty in those 10 years cover that sort of maintenance as well?
Well, you would have, yes, we would come out, the installation warranty is three years, but we would come out at any point, if there was a seam opening, it's to our best interest to come and do any of those type repairs. If there's any damage, if, you know, on any of these tracks, you can run a gator, you can run different things. You don't want to park cars on it. Motor oil isn't great for any of the surfaces and can help prematurely wear them. But, you know, there are standard maintenance, things you want to make sure, you want to keep it edged at the sides of the track. If there's damage, that would be at a cost, but we would cooperate and be part of that inspection.
Right now, we inspect the track and the turf like monthly.
Do you want to?
Okay.
Okay. JR was saying that monthly, the track and turf are inspected and...
And if there's any repairs, either we make or we call out from the contractor.
Thank you.
Can I ask an in-house question? Will we consider, we have a lot of schools that use our track, do we charge a fee? Will we consider charging a fee? I guess that's probably for Mr. Regal.
We do charge a fee. We might want to reevaluate if we get...
Well, do we charge a fee now? Because I do not know.
Yeah, we do.
We do.
We don't get a whole lot of use. We have Catholics right now.
Not a whole lot, yeah.
CYO uses it.
Right, right. I guess I should have just asked JR. But we do charge a small fee. Now, what I'm thinking is, once we get this track, of course, there's going to be many, many more organizations that might want to use it. Would we consider restructuring our fees to make use of what we now have as the golden ticket in track?
That would be something that we would discuss, whether we increase fees, the first question that would have to be answered is, are we looking to draw from outside of the community, have people from outside of the community coming in to use this? We have not looked at the track as a revenue generator. And we're looking at it mostly, you know, for use by our student athletes, members of the community. So if we decided that we were looking to have that as a revenue generator, then we would absolutely need to take a look at what we charge and under what circumstances people are permitted to use it.
Combine it with the artificial...
But it's set up for Darby also, so we can also tell people Upper Darby has one.
Yeah, and I live in the neighborhood right next to the track and we get a lot of, you know, joyful noise throughout the different sports seasons. But I think this could, if we start making this a revenue generator, there could be some real issues in the neighborhood in terms of traffic and parking and noise. A lot of people have children who go to bed at a certain time, so I'm a little hesitant if we send this out to make money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what's important here though, too, just in the context of what we're talking about, is that the track in its current form is unsafe for our students, it's not safe for our township, and that it's time to replace the track. And which option presents us with the most value for our taxpayers, our community, our students, our staff? You know, I think that those discussions about the revenue will come or go. But, you know, bottom line, I think, is that the track as it stands right now, it sounds like it's just unsafe and for the people that use it.
That leads me to another question. So with the three-month lead time for the Mondo, would it be ready in time for our fall sports? You know, they start in probably early August, those, our athletes would have that and it would be ready for them.
Yes, it would be.
Erica, does it look like it needs to be replaced? I think you spent some time there.
Yeah, I am on the track.
Well, you can do the...
Am I trying not to run that much?
We can start it early.
Very smart. Not to run that much.
I'd say in concern for my friends, sure.
Thanks, Erica.
To answer that question, we would probably start it as soon as we can, early in June, get all the prep work done, why the Mondo's been ordered. It has to sit for a month, the base, right?
Correct.
So if the month of July, it would sit. And then probably the first of August or the last week of July, whenever we got the base down, we would start the track. The track would be done second week, third week, around August. And sports teams usually start playing the third and fourth week of August. So we can do it. We would just have to start it as early as June as possible.
And I remember from the conversation when the liaisons met, that it doesn't mean that the track and stadium complex would need to be closed all summer. We could have a way to access the turf field for recreation in the summer, crossing over the work.
We probably would close it for the month of June, when all the track was getting ripped out. And then after everything got laid, then we could put, you know, boards over it so that people can use the turf, they just can't use the track.
So we'll have to think about how we're going to communicate that to the community, because I know it's just a congregating point for children and different sports teams over the summer. Just let them know to expect that the track will be out of service.
It's about three weeks.
One question. I guess for the resurfacing, the first resurfacing, it sounds like, in terms of disruption, it sounds like the Mondo resurfacing would be the very least disruptive, because you're only replacing sort of...
That's correct.
But then, for the other two options, it's sort of like a full resurfacing, so that would be more disruptive.
For sure, yes. Other questions from the board?
One thing I'd just like to add is that we generally don't ask the board to vote on something like this, the first time that we bring it to the board. But as far as the lead time on the products, if we'd like to see this happen this coming summer, the window's closing and that's why it's on the agenda this evening.
All right. Okay. Anything else? Anything else?
I think we're good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is technology review. Ms. Christensen and Mr. Anderson.
This is... Sorry. Get out of your way. I'm sorry. You can have it.
Good evening, Mr. Feinberg, board directors, fellow administrators, and community members. Thank you for allowing Mr. Anderson and I to come speak with you this evening. We are excited to share the information with everyone about the technology alignment review that is occurring within the district. By the end of this overview, you will understand why a review was initiated, the current state of the technology department, the format, as well as the essential questions that are driving this review process. Tonight, we will also provide the recommendations coming out of Phase One of the review and we'll finish the presentation with what our next steps will be. So let's start with the why. Why did we engage in a departmental review? First and foremost, let me be clear, that we were not looking to solve a problem. We instead wanted to solicit an outside perspective on how the department supports our educational, operational, and infrastructure systems. It was also important for us to have an understanding on how our current IT operations are executed. We are looking for input on workflow efficiencies and we welcome suggestions on best practices and our opportunities for efficient use of software programs to support the district as a whole. Every member of the technology department understands the need and has a shared desire to plan for the next three to five years. But just like a construction project, we must ensure that the foundation is solid before we build. Our overall objective in this review is to ensure we have a solid foundation so we can grow to meet the needs of our educational landscape. What does the department currently look like? It's a great place to start. So this slide shows you a very generalized overview of the inventory of equipment, infrastructure components, and software packages. A few notes of comparison. 10 years ago, there was not a single Chromebook across this district. Now, we have over 4,500 Chromebooks alone. iPads were just making their way into the classrooms and we had about 300 total across all three levels of the schooling. Today, there are over 2,000. The use of security cameras and electronic access points for exterior doors has changed drastically. Wi-Fi was limited, we had about 20 access points across the entire district. The PIMS and state reporting expectations have increased exponentially in the past 10 years. It's safe to say the landscape has changed just a little bit. The technology department staff is listed on the right side of this slide. And with the exceptions of very few minor adjustments, it has not changed in the past 10 years. Keeping our overarching goal in mind, along with the landscape changes that have occurred in the past 10 years, we collaborated with the Chester County Intermediate Unit to create an authentic review for our district. Here was the format that we utilized. We took a three-phase approach. We collaborated with the CCIU to generate essential questions to keep the review focused and meaningful to our specific district. On this slide, you will see the three phases and you will see the essential questions that composed Phase One and Phase Two. Our initial plan was to start with Phase One and Two, and then we would reconvene to map out Phase Three's essential questions utilizing the findings from the first two phases. As of today, Phase One is complete and Phase Two is currently in process. So Phase One, process, this shows you, this slide shows you the depth of the review. The team from the CCIU reviewed 18 comprehensive documents. These documents consisted of past and current comprehensive plans, technology plans, the one-to-one initiative plan at the high school, district and department organizational charts, along with individual job descriptions. They also met with multiple staff members, conducted focus groups, interviews, and generated surveys to gain both quantitative and qualitative data. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rob Anderson to review the recommendations provided to the district from the Phase One component of the review.
As we looked through the review supplied to us by Chester County, basically, the majority of the recommendations that were given to us could fall into three buckets. So I'm going to kind of go through each of those buckets and the recommendations that fall into each with you. So these three recommendations all fell under either the recommendation to develop a technology plan or something that could be addressed within the technology plan. So as you can see, the first recommendation was to start to develop a technology plan. We want to make sure that that also coincides with the district's strategic plan that we've started to develop as well, keeping in mind the goals that have come out of that committee. And then the last one, the second one, is a very similar recommendation of developing a technology plan. The one thing we do point out is that they specifically call out instructional technology, but as part of our tech plan, we want to ensure that we're also looking at operational and infrastructure as a part of that, as they're major supporters of that instructional technology piece. We don't want to lose sight of those elements either. The last recommendation was to restructure the technology budget, which as part of the tech plan, we would develop a more structured outline of how the funds within the technology department are allocated in the district, as well as how we prioritize certain projects over others. The next category that we'll look at is IT operations. So the first recommendation was the development of a dynamic technology infrastructure plan. Now, you've heard Sarah and I both refer to infrastructure a couple of times without really defining for you what that is. Infrastructure, basically, I tell everyone, is all the stuff behind the scenes that nobody sees that makes the device our students and staff, as well as the systems they use, actually work. So we're talking about the access points in the classrooms, the network equipment in the closets, the wires in between all of that, the servers in the data center, all of those pieces that most of our staff and students don't know exist, as long as they're working well.
Keep going.
So the development of this plan would be twofold. The first would be to ensure that we're keeping current with that equipment, that we're on a regular cycle of upgrading and keeping current with current technologies, as well as establishing standards for how that equipment's managed and configured within the district to follow best practices and security recommendations. The next IT operations recommendation was centered around a system that we put in place last spring, which is called Fresh Service. It's an ITSM software, is what CCIU referred to it as. Basically, it's IT service management. So basically, it's a system that keeps track of all the information about the IT department. So we rolled it out initially to take in support requests, so that when we might have a tech that's not in, we could use this system for someone else to step in and fill in for them, as well as us to use that information to determine what kind of training staff and our tech staff, as well as our teaching staff, might... and our tech staff, as well as our teaching staff, might need to help them on a daily basis. So their recommendation was to further establish how we're going to use the information that comes out of that system now that we've got a year under our belt with more information in there to use. In addition to just those help requests, it also keeps track of all of our inventory, all of our software applications, as well as all of our IT contracts. So again, it's just revealing how all that information can be used to make us more efficient and better support the staff and students. The other recommendation is the establishment of an SLA, or Service Level Agreement. Basically, that's just a... It's an agreement between the staff and the IT department as to when they put a request in for help, how long it will take before that issue is resolved for them. We do currently have, when they enter our ticket, a confirmation that says it'll be resolved within 48 hours, but it obviously needs a little more fleshing out to be clear on what that means as far as what'll be resolved within 48 hours. And then the last part of IT operations recommendation was taking inventory of all of our systems and software. Again, Fresh Service is going to help us by allowing us to put all of the information about all the software in there, and then we'll be able to use that to ensure when we're looking at future purchases that we're not duplicating functionality of software, as well as making sure that all of those systems can work together. So after we have that information together, we would create a procurement process to ensure that those two needs are being met as we look at new software for the district. The last category centered around staffing recommendations. So the first one was the filling of the open senior network administrator position that I believe we've spoken about during some of the budget reviews that we recommended filling as part of the next budget year. This position would manage all of that infrastructure pieces that I talked about. So all of those access points and switches and servers and everything that we need to run the district would be the responsibility of this person to make sure that not only are they functioning well, but that, again, they're set up to meet best practices, that they're secure, that all of those other things that we hear about as far as IT needing to do, that that's being done for our equipment on a regular basis. The other recommendation was reorganizing the structure roles and responsibilities of the Technology Department. As Sarah mentioned, the Technology Department largely has remained mostly unchanged for the past 10 to 12 years. Minor changes here and there, but for the most part, the positions and responsibilities that we had 12 years ago are the same today, despite a substantial shift in the number of systems, the amount of equipment, what kind of equipment, what kind of systems, and again, as well as the technical abilities of our teaching staff. Again, you can imagine that 12 years ago, our teaching staff, many of them, were very new to technology, and now, 12 years later, that's not necessarily the case for the majority of our teaching staff. So we'll look at what the roles and responsibilities of everyone are and see if there's maybe some changes that can be made to better support our staff and students using the existing staff that we have.
So what are our next steps? We are looking forward to the completion of the Phase Two results and anticipate those results over the next few weeks. Rob and I are reviewing staff roles and the responsibilities to ensure, like he indicated, that the needs of our entire system, not just the teaching staff, but across the entire system, are met and looking at ways that we might be able to utilize current staff in the roles and responsibilities shifting due to the sophistication of the software program and the development needs across the district. This planning has already resulted in a recommendation, as Rob indicated, for the filling of the senior network administrator position, and we are hopeful that that position will remain in the 2020-2021 budget. Rob is in the process of forming a technology planning committee consisting of representation from all of the stakeholder groups that are identified on the slide. The committee will generate a plan that supports the recent identified strategic planning goals, and that is very important for us, that we are a theme aligned with the vision of the district. And we will support that vision through the use of the technology committee as well. But the educational system is one of three. The technology planning committee will also address the operational and the infrastructure systems to ensure that we really are prepared to support the educational program for our district. Moving on into the 2020-21 year, the technology plan will be complete. We're also prepared to begin an equipment and an infrastructure refresh cycle. Again, these plans are budget-dependent, but we are hopeful that the plans will remain in the final budget, and we can begin with those refresh cycles to ensure that our infrastructure is monitored, updated, and working at full capacity. In closing, I would like to take a moment to recognize Rob Anderson and his entire department. As we covered tonight, this lift has been heavy for everyone in the department. Rob sets the example for the department. He works endlessly to make himself available at all times to anyone who needs it, all while trying to plan ahead. Just want to say thank you for your work and the work of the entire department, and we look forward to seeing what lies ahead for the district. Again, thank you for allowing us to come and share this information, this update with you. We will be back as we get more information from the review as the phases continue. But tonight, this was hopefully an informative overview of the Phase One results and recommendations. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Questions from the board?
That probably Rob could answer more than that.
One, real quick. When we talk about the senior network administrator position, how is that different than the district coordinator position? In that, will it be another of a duplicate position to handle the infrastructure? Or do we see the positions in some way changing to encompass different responsibilities and vision?
I'll start, and you want to fill in whatever I miss? So it's a great question, because we are saying filling a position that was there before. So currently, the position morphed a little bit into almost a dual role. But as we've reviewed and as we were looking at the needs and the sophistication across the district, there is absolutely a need for a network administrator to really just be focused on the infrastructure, the security, and the systems as a whole. By doing and filling that network void, we would have the ability to build capacity to really focus on alignment and instructional technology. So that part and component of the district technology coordinator would grow and allow for more collaboration and development to meet the goals of where we're looking to go to in the next three to five years. Did I answer your question?
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? You know, I was here when we had no Chromebooks, and it's awesome that we now have, what, 4,500? And at that time, one of the things that we talked about was support, and what a world of difference there would be supporting Chromebooks versus desktops. So that's an enormous saving right there. So it's great to see this actually come to pass. Thanks for all the good work, and please pass along that thanks to the staff.
Thank you.
So now that we've delved into the world of technology, and everybody's on the edge of their seats, it's time.
I apologize.
All sleepy to that.
So that wasn't editorial? It's time for us to jump into the world of policies.
So this evening, we are presenting to the board a second read of Board Policy 220, Student Expression. As a reminder, this policy is based upon recommendations from PSBA in the summer of 2019, just last summer, to update prior PSBA versions of this policy to comply with current statutes and case law that has developed around the country, but in particular in our region and in our federal circuit. The policy and its administrative regulations were reviewed and revised by school solicitor. And at this point, we believe the document that we've provided to you has addressed all of the questions and concerns that the board, both the board liaisons have raised in prior meetings, and then the board itself at the first reading and in the timeframe between the first reading and now. And so I hope that your documents reflect all of those changes, but we'd be happy to hear questions or comments about those and make sure we've caught everything that you've pointed out on prior occasions.
Questions or comments from the board?
This is just an editing piece for consistency. It looks like in the first paragraph, the district and board are referred to with capital letters. And then the next paragraph, district, has a lowercase d, and I think it continues that way throughout. So just to be consistent with whether we're capitalizing or not.
Very good. We'll make sure it's capitalized throughout the policy referring to our district.
In the administrative regulations, there was a heading that had been edited to describe the regulation of off-campus after-hours speech, and "speech" was removed, but it doesn't appear that the replacement word of "expression" was added in.
Oh, okay. On my version, it is.
No, I don't see it.
I don't either.
The document that was provided to you.
Right, it just crosses out "speech," but it just says "regulation of off-campus after-hours."
Right. Yeah, I'm looking at a document where that expression does appear, and that was changed based upon your comments.
Okay.
So we'll make sure that that's in the formal document.
Any other questions or comments?
Good job.
So the document that the board has simply has "speech" crossed out, but "expression" not included?
The document that's on the Word docs.
Okay, thank you. Anything for...
Need anything else?
No. We will bring that back for adoption at a subsequent meeting.
Thanks, everybody, for your help with this policy. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Next item on our agenda is the school calendar for 2021, 2022. Dr. Ruchi, is that you?
It is, because we are ready to talk about it again.
Third time's a charm.
That's right. So it was our first meeting in February where we brought the initial version of the 2021-2022 calendar to you. At that time, we were identifying a start date for the first day of school as Wednesday, September 8th, I believe. The difference between that calendar and this one that is before you this evening, which I will say now, it is our intent to send this home to all of our families as we did with the first calendar in February, to send this home tomorrow. The change on here is that it identifies September 9th as the first day of school. The reason for that being that September 8th is the second day of Rosh Hashanah, and we do not want to ask our children to make a choice between attending the first day of school and observing their faith-based observances. We typically have closed our schools one day for Rosh Hashanah, and that second day, students can use their religious exemption in order to take that day off. But the importance of the first day of school, we were trying to avoid. So that's why we're bringing this one forward for you this evening. The other change that is in there is May 17th. We would look to have that as an early dismissal day. Not our first choice to do that, it's the primary day. We've done that once before. We got a lot of cooperation from outside of our school community to do that. We have 18 months to start working on what that would look like. We should be able to come up with some creative approaches to that. The reason that we're fixated on trying to do something like that is to avoid having the last day of school fall on a Monday and set up an unrealistic expectation that the children would come to school for a half-day on a Monday. So if you had looked at or compared this calendar to the one that was presented, the first board meeting in February, there are the only two differences that you will see to that calendar. So that's the explanation for you, and we will, as I said, it'll be going home. We are issuing the March issue of Haverford Happenings, and it's the top story. And when we send out the information about Haverford Happenings, we've put some summary in the message letting folks know, find out about you know, find out about this one coronavirus and a few other things that we've letting people know are highlighted within Haverford Happenings. So all families will receive that tomorrow, but we would be asking you, the board, to approve this at the March 19th meeting.
Dr. Ruchi, just to clarify, the 17th, you may have mentioned this, I apologize if I missed it. The 17th, May 17th, as a school day is a concern, even with early dismissal, because it's election day.
That's correct, yes.
Dr. Ruchi, I think it was within the last year or two that we had that, and I don't know if it was because of a snow day issue or something, but I mean, it was very recent that we've also done this.
It was, yeah, two years ago when we had all those inclement weather days.
And so it's not just that we've done this once before, but it's that it was very recent. I'm sure that the...
Yeah, the Board of Elections worked extremely well with us, you know, out in the school. Our local police worked well with us. And we had a shorter window of time to pull that together. So I think we should be able to pull something off there.
Are all of our schools used as polling places?
Yes. Yeah, there isn't anyone that's not.
Multiple, okay.
Yes, Oakmont is as well.
I was just going to comment on a couple of things. One, I think this calendar has some advantages, one being a nice, long summer and that it helps us with the construction projects that will hopefully be wrapping up in that summer and gives us some cushion to accommodate the move into the new Linwood and things like that. It also arguably is perhaps a more consistent start to the school year. But I did want to point out a couple of things. One is for people who have high school students who participate in fall sports, the start of the fall sports season is set by the PIA. It has nothing to do with the start of our school day.
That's correct. That'll probably fall around August 16th.
August 16th. So even with school not starting until September 9th, there's three and a half weeks that many of our high school students will be back and actively engaged in school. So just wanted to make sure as we're planning ahead and giving the community 18 months to think about the start of the 2021 or 21 school year, that that date is also known. And I also just think it is important to acknowledge with this time that people have to plan, that September 9th is likely also going to be a hardship for some people, people who aren't able to take off time from work or have other kind of commitments that make it challenging at that time of year. I know when my kids were little, to try to find camps that went to the end of August and into September is a challenge. So hopefully, with this advance notice, people can make the arrangements that they need to accommodate a start date of September 9th.
Other comments from the board?
Yeah, I just want to thank Dr. Ruchi and her team for taking a third look at this. There's so many considerations that go into a calendar. This is obviously, this is my first year on the board, and so learning about all of the different considerations that go into making a calendar has been fascinating. But clearly, there's a lot of work that goes behind this. I know there's a lot of work that goes behind every single draft. I really appreciate it. I think that we talk a lot in our community about diversity and inclusion, and one of the ways that we can really exemplify what, not just that we have these seminars and not just that we have, you know, different learning opportunities about diversity and inclusion, but that we're thinking about it when we implement things like this and thinking about what it would mean for a student to have to choose to not go to the first day of school. And when we are creating a society where we are trying to invite everyone to be a part of our community, I think that's really important. And the goal of diversity and inclusion should be that everyone is invited and that everyone has the opportunity to attend. And so in a normal year... And so in a normal year, I think it works to have just the one day of the religious observance, but to have the first day fall on that religious observance and have it be a really difficult decision for families to make, I think, was a good consideration, a good thing to take into consideration with this calendar. I know there was a lot of feedback, and so I think, again, appreciate that your team took all of the feedback as well. But I, you know, this looks like, hopefully, it's not ever going to work for everybody, but hopefully this is taking a lot of our values into consideration when we're creating this calendar, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I think as Angela just pointed out, and I want to also echo her thanks to you and your staff, Dr. Ruchi, for working on this. The reason why we had this, why we had so many of these is in response to public feedback. And I mean, I know that when you, you know, I started this back in December. You get emails each week from parents about various issues. If you added up all of those for the first two and a half months, multiplied it by three, I don't think you come close to the amount that we've received for the past couple of weeks with regards to the calendar. So these changes were made with, you know, really based on public feedback. So I know that when you send an email in or have a comment, you don't get maybe a status of, you know, you respond to saying, you know, "Thank you for responding. We appreciate it. We're looking at it." I know it sounds very formulaic, but they are taken very seriously by all of the board members here and by Dr. Ruchi and her staff. I know that, I read all of my PSBA emails, the email I get from them all the time, but we do read all of these emails from the public, and we do take them very, very seriously. And we've, I think, done a pretty good job at trying to be sensitive to religious and cultural holidays, family time, and everything else. So I do thank you, everybody, for really working on this, taking their look at it, and taking a real response to the feedback. It is considered and it is discussed by everybody, taken very seriously. We don't, we're not doing this for the money. We're trying to be very responsive to parents and students, so thank you very much.
This has also been a learning experience for me. I was trying to understand, I was talking with another board member, just, we don't get as many emails or as much uproar when it comes to the dollar amounts that we're spending or budgets, but when it comes to the calendar, we got a lot of response. And I was like, I wonder why that is. But time is so finite. We all have the same amount of time, and we have to make the best we can with it, choose between our family and our jobs and making sure our children receive an education. So this actually has helped put things into perspective for me, and I just, the calendar's incredibly important, and thank you for all the work that you and your staff have done on it.
Can I ask a quick question? So because it is so late this year, for children that are starting, let's say, the first year of a school, so that would be kindergarten, sixth grade, ninth grade, do those first two days look different for those kids? Is there like a different, do you understand what I'm saying? Like, do, I don't know, in some school districts, like, sixth graders go to school on the first day, and then the seventh and eighth graders go, or something like that? So everybody's in first day, full, you know?
Yes.
Okay. Just, so for planning purposes, so when we're thinking about what that looks like, I just wanted to be clear about that. Okay, great.
Isn't it the case that for our kindergarteners, the first day is actually a parent day? I know having a kindergartner...
For orientation, it is, yes.
For orientation, right? And so, but so our kindergarten students would start on, or they would actually not be in school until Friday?
They do attend. The parents have a session with the parents and guardians, and the children go into the rooms and meet the teachers, so they are there. It's not always a full two-and-a-half-hour kindergarten day, that first day, but they are in attendance.
Also, just to clarify for everybody, this is the calendar for 2021, 2022.
Year and a half, 18 months.
Which I also appreciate as, you know, as a parent and a person in the community, that we have the foresight to look this far out, so that it gives people preparation.
When you've noticed.
We could very well be talking about the calendar for 2020, 2021 at this time, but we're a year in the future, so that's, thank you for that.
And also just to clarify for the public, we're not looking at option A, B, or C. This is the current iteration, the current draft of the calendar that's on the table.
Yes, this will go home with that description tomorrow, that this is the calendar we will be asking the board to approve on the 19th.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I'd just like to make a couple of comments. You know, certainly want to thank Dr. Ruchi and the staff. Also want to put a couple of things in perspective. We have 6,600 kids in the district right now. So when my colleagues talk about volume of emails, I don't think we had 30 emails on this issue. Most of my board colleagues are relatively new. I can tell you that there's issues where you might see a lot more than 30 emails. The other thing that I'd like to make an observation on is I think that social media has really had a derogatory impact on public dialogue. I think that people get online and it's like banging trashcan lids together in a, you know, in a tunnel. I would ask, and I know it won't make any difference, but I would ask folks before they press the send button to please read their emails, and at a minimum, to be civil and polite. These are all volunteers up here. Nobody up here stands to gain anything, and they're doing public service. And collectively, we're trying to do the best job we can for the community. So thanks for your comments. It'd be nice if you took a little look at them before you sent them. Okay.
I have remarks.
Dr. Ruchi?
Thank you. Okay. I will be brief since I did talk about the calendar. But just a few things to let folks know, I mentioned Haverford Happenings for March will be sent home tomorrow, and that will be the calendar. We're also highlighting within there, we have initiated an FAQ document that will reside on our website with questions that we have been asked about coronavirus and how we are addressing that in our schools. We did send an email message to all parents last week with, you know, just some reminders, you know, about washing of hands and, I was laughing with people earlier, I've been washing my hands so much, now I need hand cream. But our, tomorrow, what we'll go out, we'll focus on some of the questions that we have been, have been receiving. As recent as today, Ms. Saxa and our elementary principals talked about handwashing education through, you know, in a formalized way throughout the elementary buildings, to at least make sure that all students have someone talking with them at school about that as well, how that can best occur at school. And then education, we have received a few requests from parents, what are we saying to children in the schools about coronavirus, and in a way that will not be frightening to them? So we have looked to identify some resources that our teachers can use, both to talk about the coronavirus and also to address any discriminatory remarks that may be made about any members of, you know, population that, you know, might be considered carriers of the coronavirus. So we are getting guidance from outside organizations that we can now use as resources for our teachers. So we're going to look at some of that, whatever we're going to be using, that will come in our next update to parents. So any information that we get, we certainly will be sharing that with parents. Another question that we have received has been about closing of our schools and what we are going to do about online learning to... I just want to put it out there right now, that is not feasible. 6,600 children at home and looking at online learning for all of them. That sounds great, and I am sure that within our strategic planning process, we will be looking at how we can create some of those experiences in meaningful ways for students as they move through our system. But as an answer to this public epidemic, you know, that could potentially be occurring, with that being said, we also, our students have Chromebooks at the high school. Our kindergarten children are not given Chromebooks. We do not know what kind of access people have in their homes, so to say that these, all these resources, here they are, available to you, well, if your child can't access them from home, that creates a significant inequity. With that being said, we've also talked about, you know, possibly our curriculum department making some suggestions for parents, like if children are home and there are some things that you want your child to be able to work on, to look at, you know, in an enjoyable way, here are some resources that you may want to look at. It will not be that they must complete and bring back to school and turn in. If we are in a position where our schools need to close for up to a week, we will be fine, meaning that we will not have to make up time at the end of the year. That's another question that has come in. You know, if you are forced to close schools, well, wouldn't you also be given a reprieve from the 180? There's no guarantee there. The year with all the snow and the state of emergency and all those other announcements, we were given no reprieve. We had trees down, power wires down, and buses could not get out of our transportation lot, and we petitioned for a reprieve, and we were not granted it. So I'm not banking on getting any reprieve from PDE if we have to close. Fortunately, the winter has been kind to us, so we have days there that we intend for inclement weather, and they may end up being used if we find ourselves in that situation. We take our guidance from local health agencies, certainly the Department of Health at the state level, any information that would be shared with us, we would be reacting and responding to that. Our goal will be, as long as it is safe and healthy, to keep our schools open. If the children are not well, home is where they should be. And we want to be able to keep our schools open and not have a situation where 6,600 kids are out in the community. So that we will continue to send those updates to folks, but look for some more information in Haverford Happenings, and the FAQ document will always be updated as different questions come in.
Thank you, Dr. Ruchi. Next item on our agenda is budget transfers. I'll accept a motion to approve budget transfers in the amount of $4,420.
Moved.
Moved in second. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Menjy?
Yes.
Mr. Centev?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Yes.
Ms. Wedeman?
Yes.
Ms. Feinberg?
Yes. Nine voting yes. Thank you.
Eight.
Eight voting yes, I'm sorry. Next item, I'll accept a motion to approve disbursements from the general fund totaling
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the high school track renovation, and I would say that it's the recommendation of our liaison group to go with the Mondo track, based on the quality of the product and on the total life cycle cost. So that's what we're asking you to vote on this evening. I'll accept the motion to approve the CoStar's proposal.
So moved.
By Miller Flooring Company.
Oh, very.
To renovate the high school track with surface option number three, including new sand pits and drain gates, at a cost not to exceed $1,093,195.
Now some move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item, I'll accept a motion to accept the following, the retirements and resignations as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? I'd like to just acknowledge Ms. Needles, 40 years of service. Forty.
Forty.
Wow.
That's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the appointments as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. How are we doing in the bus driver and bus assistant department?
We're always accepting applications. Do you have some time on your hands? I think we're up and running. We've added, but we can use more help. And in fact, we were at a recruitment fair earlier this week. One of our elementary principals and one of our assistant principals from the high school, out trying to find some applicants out at the DCIU, so we're still at it. George puts up signs and everyone's like...
Is training provided, or are we looking for people who already have experience?
We will provide the training and get the licensing deal.
Great.
And we're paid during that time.
And you get paid during the training.
They're paid during their training.
Paid training.
Might be a career switch for me.
I'll accept a motion to approve the leave requests as listed.
Moved.
Did you vote on the appointments?
Did you vote on the appointments?
We could go back and vote again, just in case. All in favor of the appointments?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're good. Leaves of absence. I'll accept a motion to approve the leave requests as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the student educational excursions as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Just so everybody knows, I'm going to be a chaperone on one of these. I'm like, do I want it to be approved? Yes. I do, I do.
Looks like a lot of good stuff. Our athletes and other students are doing orchestra here, and I wish everyone the best of luck at all of these events.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve and adopt the board policies as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
We should just note that these had had a first reading and a second reading and the liaisons and lots of inputs, so though there's probably not any other discussion tonight, they've been covered.
Thank you. Board reports. Dave, you got anything?
I don't think we voted on that, then.
We didn't.
It throws you off if someone starts second.
That's right.
It's late, yeah.
All in favor of approving and adopting the board policies as listed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board reports. Mr. Schwartz?
It's almost 9:30. I've got nothing left for now, no report.
Really quickly, last night, I attended the Linwood PTO meeting with Dr. Ruchi, Bridgette, and Larry, and it was really great to meet some of the Linwood parents and have a chance to respond to their questions and concerns. And I want to thank you, Bridgette, for coordinating all the school board's PTO visits, because I know that's a big lift, and thank you.
Sure, thanks. And we've got two more coming up in April. Chestnut Wald and Cooper Town are still to get those visits and Q and A sessions, so looking forward to those. I just wanted to say on Monday, I had the opportunity to go into Manoa for Read Across America Day, and it was so stinking cute. I was in a second-grade classroom, and I got to read some of my favorite, like, read aloud books from when my kids were little. The kids were adorable, they were attentive and excited, and one of the books mentioned the Great Barrier Reef, and they were all like, "Ooh, we learned about that. That's in Australia." So in addition to the reading, they also kindly asked about my role on the school board and what it does, so it was a really nice opportunity to talk with kids and explain that, in addition to, you know, the facilities and hiring teachers and making decisions about the curriculum and books, and that one of our favorite things is really to get the feedback from the kids and like when students come in to be recognized. I mentioned how some people from plays or musicals will come in and perform a number and represent the clubs and things that they're in, from our sports teams, and I said, you know, from the Fords and... you know, from the Fords, and they're like, "Oh, I know the Fords, I've seen a Fords game." So it was a nice reminder that our school community, like even our youngest learners should see all the opportunities that they'll have in our school system and, you know, the building blocks for their path in our schools to graduation, and then also kind of giving the skills for the future success. And so it was nice to talk to them about that, and I understand that Manoa will be in here at an upcoming meeting to talk about the kindness. Yep, so I'm looking forward to that.
Great. Antoinette?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that I, in my other life, am an attorney, and so I often attend continuing legal education courses, and I had the opportunity to attend one on Monday that was very interesting. It was about public schools. It was actually specifically about a case that went up to the Supreme Court in one of our neighboring districts. But for a lot of us that weren't maybe in this sphere then, back in the 50s, there used to be mandatory prayer from the Holy Bible in all of our public schools for several minutes a day, and a very confident junior in high school said, "I don't think that's right." And so he brought it all the way up to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court agreed with him that it was not right. And so I had the opportunity to meet this no longer young man, and also just learn a little bit about expression in schools and our First Amendment, and it was really interesting. So it was a little bit of my worlds colliding, so.
That's great. So.
Just one quick thing on, the PSBA every year puts out a State of Education Report, and it's going to be issued on, released on March 23rd as part of Advocacy Day. If you have an opportunity to take a look at it, it's actually a really, it's an interesting read. It's long, but it talks about other parts of our state and, you know, the state of education across the state of Pennsylvania. It's interesting to kind of gain that perspective from some of the other parts of our state in terms of their data and numbers and what they might be seeing in terms of education as well. So keep your eyes out for that. When it comes out, I'll send out a link, but it's a pretty interesting document if you get a chance to look at.
Dr. Crispin?
I got my agenda for Advocacy Day, which I'm very excited about, should be neat. And there's a lot of training opportunities and sessions to attend in between meetings, so I'm looking forward to my first Advocacy Day. I am sorry that I wasn't able to do Read Across America, because it sounded like so much fun, but I'll put it on my calendar for next year. And then also, when personal and professional worlds collide, I usually attend, I'm not attending this year, but I usually attend a conference that's called the Association for Education, Finance and Policy, and it's a collaboration of researchers and practitioners, and the conference is every March, usually around the 17th-ish of March. And if you are interested in that, lots of great research is being done by economists and public policy experts and education researchers and practitioners. And if that's something that anyone is interested in, I'm happy to tell you more. They have a journal, they have lots of different work sessions, they talk a lot about current education policy that's happening, and I could go on and on and on. It's a whole three or four day conference. I won't go on, but if anybody is curious about that, I usually attend. I'm not doing this year, but it's a really great opportunity. So anyway, if anybody wants more, I'll tell you more. But other than that, that's all I have.
Susan?
Thanks, Larry. I attended the Delaware County Intermediate Unit meeting the other, I've attended about three of them, but the other night, we had an opportunity to listen to some people talk to us about the technical school. I'm going to put you on the spot. How many kids do we have that go to the technical school, the technical high school?
Roughly 60, and then we have another 21 to 29, depending on the year, that go to med careers.
Go to the med career, yeah. So I think one of the things that maybe I hope everyone has noticed is that technical high school is becoming something that people are supporting and people are talking about, trying to encourage students to let them know that they don't, college is not the only answer, it's one of the answers. So I'm going to read to you, Delaware County Technical High School students recently competed in Skills USA. 300 students competed in various competitions. Out of those 300 students, DCTS had several accomplishments. They took first place in the collision repair category. Think about these categories, they're so cool, at high school that you're getting to learn this stuff. DCTS had five students receive second place and 14 students receive third place. They had two kids from automotive technology win fourth place at the top tech competition. Our students competed against 80 teams from five different states. Seven students competed in careers through culinary arts program at Philadelphia Community College. They have, those kids feed the board every, every two weeks that there's a meeting, and they're wonderful. These students are competing for a culinary scholarship. This was the preliminary round, and results will be announced next week. Fire behavior is commonly defined as the manner in which fuel ignites, flame develops, and fire spreads and exhibits other related phenomena as determined by the interaction of fuels, weather and topography, which I guess we all knew, from fire research and management exchange system. While EPS students got to see live fire behavior in action. Students also witnessed several fire suppression and ventilation concepts put to use. Thank you to the DCTS Building Trades Program for providing the students with scale houses and Fallcroft Fire Company for providing the fires standby. So I just, I just think it's important that we know that there are lots of choices out there today, and here in Delaware County, we have one that is really teaching students how to do skills. Thanks, Larry.
You bet. I also had a chance to read at Manoa, and it was, as you said, it was a blast, so keeps you young. I miss reading those kinds of books. My kids are in their late twenties, and they just don't appreciate them anymore. Last meeting, we unanimously passed a resolution and supported charter funding reform, and an update on that today. The governor had a press release that over 100 of the 500 school districts around the state have already passed a similar resolution, so I want to thank the board for that, and we're hoping to keep, keep the ball rolling, support the governor, and hopefully that'll translate into legislation. In terms of Advocacy Day, it's great that you're going. There are over 200 people registered as of this morning, and we are scheduled to meet with Senator Leach, Representative Zabel, and I believe staff from Representative Vitale's office. It's tough to schedule 200 people and all those legislators, and it's not just us, it's, you know, our neighboring districts that share those legislators. So we'll look forward to that. It should be a fascinating day. And I think that's the most of it. The board met in executive session prior to the public meeting to have an opportunity to review personnel issues, including appointments, resignations and leaves of absence. The board also received information from the interim Food Services Director regarding the state administrative review to occur in spring 2020 and general food service reports. And with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Thanks, everybody.